Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna go ahead and get this meeting started. At this time, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. And this time, if you would please, let's stand for a moment of prayer. Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we are grateful, Lord, that you were able to bring this group together and we were able to keep it civil and above board. I hope and pray, Lord, as we go through this meeting, that we do our due diligence in what is best for the county and the population thereof. Guide and direct us in the path you have us to go and be with us as we make our decisions through this meeting in your heavenly sweet name we pray. Amen. And while we are standing, let's do the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mrs. Seaton. All right. We have got some amendments to the agenda, but they should already be on the meeting agenda for tonight. I'm gonna have to have a...I'm gonna read them out here. Item 3, amendments to the agenda. Do we need to vote on these? I'm gonna go ahead and read them out. We're gonna vote on them as a whole. Amendments to the agenda, number 1. Add under action items, section approved minutes on number 6, called meeting, minutes dated September 11th, 2014. Number 2, item E. Add quick claim deed between Pickens County and Eric Rowan. Number 3, item F. Adoption of policies for employee handbook. Number 4, item G. Approval and adopt the 2014 miller rate. I'm gonna go back. Under item G, I'd like to move it down to number 5 and move them four up. Item H. Authorized opening of checking account for CDBG grant. Number 14, POI 112-15690. And then approve and adopt the 2014 miller rate on item G. I need a motion and a second. The approval of the amendments to the agenda. Jerry has made the move.
Second.
Ms. Becky has seconded it. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed, thank you.
That has been approved. Item...all right. So that brings us down to item 4, the approval of the agenda with the amendments. I'm trying to move a second for that. No, we're done now, okay. So that brings us down to item 5, the financial report. I'm gonna turn it back over to Ms. Harvey and for the financial report.
Okay, this is the August 2014 financial report, and it reflects eight months of the 2014 fiscal year. The expenditure budget should be at 66.7% or less. The general fund revenue collected through August 31st is at $7,514,097. That's 35.7% of the total budget of revenue. The general fund expenditures for the first eight months totaled to $13,194,039, and that is 62.69%. So overall, the expenditures are at four. They're a little over 1 in 4% under the allowable level. So let's go through the revenue for taxes. Through August, we collected $3,768,351. For licenses and permits, $173,635. Intergovernmental, $1,603,058. Charges for services is at $1,734,431. Fines and forfeitures, $162,533. Interest, $2,084. Other revenue is at $61,747. Transfers, $8,158. For the total of $7,514,97. So we'll go to the expenditure budgets. Under the general government department, that includes the commission and general budgets, the elections budget, the tax commissioner, tax assessors, and general government buildings. That budget is at $2,054,688. That's 60.17% of the total. The judicial budgets. Superior Court and grand administration is at $481,818. Clerk of Court, Board of Equalization, 314,144. District Attorney, 192,133. Magistrate is at 181,448. Probate, 191,367. The juvenile court at 325,598. Public defender is at 284,109. For a total judicial of $1,976,13. And that is 59.24% of the total expenditure budget. In public safety, sheriff is at $3,308,416. Probation and drug abuse funds, $339,17. The fire administration, operations and fire stations is at $793. EMS administration, operations and buildings, $1,288,110. Coroner is at 31.887. E-911, general fund budget is $10,0412. The animal shelter, 107,361. EMA is at $40,669. For a total of public safety, $5,923,664. And that is 61.75%. Okay, after public safety, we have public works. The public works budget for the roads, the maintenance shop, is at $1,656,415. That budget is...it's over budget. It's mostly due to seasonal road projects, mowing and paving. Any of the paving projects that began after July 1st will be...can be paid with the 2014 squash proceeds. So those budgets hopefully will adjust during the year. The solid waste landfill budget is at $226,425. Public education, Keep Pickens Beautiful, is at $18,356. Total public works is $1,901,197, or 77.52%. The health and welfare, that includes the health department, the senior center, and the MATS buses. Their total expenditures through August were $150,086. That's 43.82%. Culture and recreation. Recreation administration and programs has spent $396,630. The library is at $160,597, for a total of $557,227. Under housing and development, the county extension service is $28,355. Planning and development and building inspections, $242,600. The county marshal, $38,0974. Economic development, $41,182. Tate Depot, $314. Total housing and development, $351,405. So the total expenditure budget is at $13,194,039, or it's at 62.69%. The enterprise funds. The water department is...has spent $1,256,769. The airport, $214,0534. E-911 special revenue is $611,571. And I have the airport budget highlighted there. It appears that it is over budget at 78%, but their revenue, they sold and had to buy and replace so much of the jet fuel and the gasoline there. Their revenue is currently $30,000 over their expenditures for the year.
Excuse me. Comment at the end, I'm sorry.
The Keep Pickens Beautiful and economic development budgets are at 75%. Those are amounts that are paid quarterly, and at the end of August, we paid the fourth quarter contribution for that...I'm sorry, the third quarter. So they are...that budget will level out toward the...by the end of the year. And the line item budgets were...those reports were distributed to the department heads and elected officials on September 15th. And I have copies of those line item budgets if you'd like to review them.
Thank you, Becky. That will bring us down to item 6 on the consent agenda. Consent agenda, we did a signed a resolution authorizing volunteers and elected officials to be covered by the ACCG Group Self-Insurance Workers Compensation Fund. This is this item right here. This right here is a little note that goes along with that. This is the only update to the Board of Commissioners. The last one that was done was in 1994, which read sole commissioner. So it hasn't been changed to the board. We don't have any old business. We're up to item 70, old business. New business. Is Mr. Jack Dunn here? Jack, please come forward. We've got a resolution for Mr. Jack Dunn. Jack?
Mr. Jack Dunst, thank you for coming.
I'm gonna read this. This is Jack Dunn proclamation. Whereas Pickens County is proud to be the home of the recipient of the NCPA 2014 Willard B. Simons Independent Pharmacist of the Year Award, and whereas Jack Dunn, lifelong resident of Pickens County and longtime business owner here in the community, has been chosen for this prestigious award by the National Community Pharmacists Association, and whereas the NCPA and association of over 25,000 pharmacists will present the award to Mr. Dunn at their 116th Annual Convention in Austin, Texas in October of this year. And whereas Jack was chosen for this award because of his exemplary leadership and commitment to the independent pharmacy. And Jack has also been involved in many civic and cultural affairs in Pickens County and has been an avid supporter of our local sports programs. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Pickens County hereby is pleased to recognize Jack Dunn for his outstanding accomplishments and for his dedication to improving the quality of life in Pickens County. Congratulations. I wanted to say something. I do this for y'all. This is what I was born and raised to do. My father started me as a pharmacist, and I love this. And so I'm just fortunate to take this award and this for y'all. Thank you. That takes care of new business. Now that brings us down to item 9, action items. We need to get some minutes approved here. Let's see. Number 1, regular board meeting on August 24th, 2014. I need to get those minutes approved by the board, please. All right, I have a move by Jerry.
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Becky. I have a move and a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, number 2. We have the meetings we need to approve for the call, the work session on August 25th, 2014. I know you all got copies of all these and read them. I need a move and a second to approve those meetings. Show a move.
Second.
I have a move and a second. Any further discussion? None being all that in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. None opposed. Item number 3. We need to approve the call...the minutes on a call meeting on August 25th, 2014. Show a move. All right, I have a move.
Second.
I have a move and a second. Any further discussion? None being all that in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. So that brings us down to item 4. Public hearing on 2014 miller rate increase, September 11th, 2014, 10:00 a.m., first of three public hearings. I need a move and a second to approve those minutes. Show a move.
Second.
All right, I have a move and a second. Any further discussion? None being all that in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. Item 5, public hearing on 20...we have the minutes on the public hearing on 2014 miller rate increase on September 11th, 2014, at 6:00 p.m., at the second of the three public hearings. I need a move and a second to approve those minutes, please. Show a move.
Second.
I have a move and a second. Any further discussion? None being all that in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. And then we go down to number 6. We have a call meeting. Execution of an intergovernmental agreement, development authority bond and related documents on September 11th, 2014, at 5:00 p.m. I have a move and a second to approve those minutes. Show a move.
Second.
I have a move and a second. Any further discussion? None being all that in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. That's got that approved. That brings us down to item B. We've had a...on item B, on number 1, had a rezon request, number RZ 7141163. Paulette Moxie, Sparkling Springs Road, Jasper, Georgia. She was moving it from agriculture to a small...to a small agricultural parcel, number 049-013-005, with 13.44 acres. I have it here in front of you, Ms. Becky. It's...Pickens County Planning and Development Office received a complete application on July 30th, 2014 from Paulette Moxie requesting a change in the land use classification of agriculture to small agriculture on 13.44 acres located on Sparkling Springs Road in Jasper. The intended purpose of the rezon request, if approved, is to rezon to a small agriculture, then divide the tract into two smaller lots suitable for the zoning in order to sell an 8-acre tract and to keep the remaining 5.44 acres which is adjacent to Mrs. Moxie's property. The land is located on Sparkling Springs Road with no improvements on it and was owned by Mrs. Moxie's late brother. After reviewing the application, receiving the staff report for the rezon request to be approved, and listening to the testimony from both the applicant and the public, the Pickens County Planning Commission voted 6 yes to 0 no to approve the rezon request on the 13.44 acre parcel contained on tax map...on tax map parcel number 049-013-005. The Pickens County Planning Commission now forwards this request to the Board of Commissioners for your review and decision. So I need a move and a second. It has...like it said, it has been approved by the Planning Commission 6 to 0 for approval. Show a move. Okay, I have a move by...
Second.
I have a move by...second by Becky. Any further discussion? None being all that in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
And that brings us down to item 2. Zoning fees for small agricultural, estate residential, and special planned community. This is a fee schedule that was brought to the commissioners by the...by the board, Planning and Development, for items that were not in the...not in our...yeah, more unique category that they have...they have looked at and approved and wanted us to go ahead and look at and see if we approved them. We have...we have...we have looked at them. Then we just read through them, thank you. I'll need to...I need to have a motion to adopt this new fee schedule. Show a move.
Second.
All right, I have a move and a second. Any further discussion? None being all that in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed, thank you very much. We'll head and approve that. All right. On item C, we have an addendum to the contract for land donation from Pickens...from Big Canoe. This is in regard to the property up there on Steve Tate Road for a fire station going up in that area that they have donated to Pickens County to put a fire station on.
All we need to do is vote on the...there's a reverter clause in there, and that's the only...only thing left. Everything else is a sign.
All right.
And the recommendation is a 10-year...it is 10-year for...
We have a...we have a reverter clause in this that if we do not build a station on this in 10 years, the property falls back to Big Canoe. I need a move and a second to accept that. Show a move.
Second.
All right. I have a move and a second. Any further discussion? None being all that in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, and that brings us down to item D. Item D is an agreement by and between Pickens County and Northwest Georgia Administrative Services for a CDBG grant, which is going towards Good Samaritan Grant. Good Samaritan is the unit of help that volunteers do for Pickens County citizens, and they have applied for a grant and they received it. We need to approve...see if we can read it sound...we need to approve that agreement. It does not put Pickens...the way I read this thing, it does not put Pickens County in any...they're gonna handle it completely. Yeah, it's a complete thing. We're not...all we're doing is helping pull everything together. So that being said, I need a move and a second to approve this where they can go ahead and start...start pulling their money from the state. Show a move.
Second.
I have a move and a second. Any further discussion? None being all that in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. Also, along with that, and that was part of the amendments to the agenda, we need permission... you got the paperwork on that, Ms. Fay, for the setting up a bank account for CDBG?
It's just to authorize...
All right. I need a...I need a move and a second for authorization for Ms. Harvey to set up a bank account for the CDBG grant for the Good Samaritan Health Services over here. I need a move for her to go ahead and set that bank account up. Have a move?
Second.
I have a move and a second. Any further discussion? None being all that in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None being, thanks. I'll get that taken care of there. And we'll have to sign off right now. All right. Item E. We got a quick claim deed between Pickens County, Georgia, and Eric and Christina Rowan. You wanna...
This is for a lot that was sold at a tax sale. Rowan to come in and pay the back taxes as well as the cost associated with...that's already been tendered to the tax commissioner. And so they paid it. They deserve to have the market needed to.
All right. So we need to run this through for approval. All right. I need a...I need a move and a second to authorize me to sign this where this quick claim...quick claim deed can be processed. Show a move.
Second.
All right, we have a move and a second. Any further discussion? None being all that in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right. Item F. Something that we've been working on for...all three of us have been working on for quite some time. The county attorney has looked at it, as well as the attorney firm that Cliff Nelson represents. It's the adoption of policies of the employee handbook. The policies will include nepotism policy, civic and political activities policy, telephone and cell phone usage while at work policy, Pickens County government implement weather and emergency closures of county offices, and Pickens County drivers policy. I believe you all have reviewed it. I need a move and a second to go ahead and adopt this into our handbook. Show a move.
Second.
All right, we have a move and a second. Any further discussion? None being all that in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed, thank you very much. That brings us down to G, because item H, we cleared it up on the other side with that CDBG grant, to approve and adopt the 2014 miller rate. We have heard we've had three meetings on this. I'm gonna ask for your recommendation on what...what we need to proceed with on that. Do we want to go with a half a mil? Show a move.
Second.
All right. We have a move and a second to go with a half a mil increase on this. Any further discussion? None being all that...all that in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, none opposed. That motion has been carried. Becky, I'm gonna open this thing up to comments at the end of the meeting. So I'm gonna leave you online in case somebody wants to ask you a question, but at this time, I'm gonna open it up for any questions or comments. Yes, sir.
I was feeling, Eric, while I go out, said you...I think you asked a question, and I can't hear real well. But I think you asked me the question, did that include the school system too with my comparison? No. That's the population of the county versus the taxes that are taken in there. So you take the 30,000 people, the 21 million budget, and that's where you come up with $700 per head. So that does put us at the top. Looking at what we went over tonight, we're 4%...let's say, right now, under budget, and that's over $800,000 if everybody would stay in budget for the rest of the year. That would more than compensated for this miller increase if we would have. But since it's already passed, can we get you to say that that $800,000, if it's still there at the end of the year, and the balance in there now of 300,000 or 400,000 would be applied to the reduction of the tan? Does that...would that be the situation? Okay. And you made the comment, Jerry, you weren't here when Steve said the taxes had been raised. You're here now. So you take responsibility for this one.
I get you. Yes. Jerry made the motion to raise the taxes, so we...I've been to all three public hearings and heard the complaints. I've been part of it. I've been coming to these meetings for about two years. What I'd like to know is kind of in reference to what these two were talking about, you're gonna raise taxes anyway. Jerry, I'd like for you to tell us what a textbook hearing would be to where you didn't raise taxes. What would we want to hear at these hearings so we'll know as the...as the public of the county on a situation where taxes wouldn't be raised? So what...so we'll know why are we here?
Well, the biggest thing, if we didn't have a tan. If we had money to start the year, 30...30%...40% of the year's budget in hand when we start that year, would be the ideal way to start.
Yeah, but I'm talking about a hearing. What we're here for. We knew we had a tan, and y'all knew you had a tan going into these hearings. What I'm looking for is a...is what do these hearings need to look like to where you wouldn't raise taxes? What are we here for?
That would be one of them if we didn't have that. And if we had enough money for this increases that we had on there for next year.
I think we're still missing a point here.
But I'm likely...
Yes.
Well, I'm sure, yeah, that too. We got this budget hearings coming up. We can keep them down as much as we can.
And y'all gonna be...
And I think if you're the ones that come, Gary was there, he realized that we tried and we accomplished some with the pharmacist world.
We're gonna try harder this year though, won't we, Jerry? And to Fay's comment last week, heavy at the top, light at the bottom, I appreciate that out of her because, you know, if we could start at the top and whack some of these chiefs and unnecessary departments and give it to the Indians on the low end, you know, I appreciate that out of her, even though she voted for this tax law.
All right. I give both. I think that was...
I give both the, that's true.
Has nothing to do with, the, the community center? Can it be used as a tornado shelter?
After. It's an after shelter. It is, it is, uh, registered by the, by the federal government to be used after. It's one of the few buildings we've got that's got showers in it. That's where that, that comes in on that, and generator. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Bart?
Yes, sir. Uh, you've been talking about the budget hearings coming up. When are the budget hearings, and will they be advertised in the paper?
They are ready, if I'm not mistaken, they're ready on the.
I just wanna make sure everybody here knows when and where they are.
The budget hearings are on the website, and if you have trouble, like some people, you know, trying to, myself included, trying to get on the web to get them out, if you'll let us know, we'd be glad to give you a copy of those dates, and they will be in the paper. They will be in the paper.
And they aren't posted in the Edmondville?
And they're posted in the Edmondville. Yes, ma'am?
Will the department heads be there?
Yes. Well, I can speak for the department heads that we're responsible for. The, uh, and all the elected officials should be there when they bring their budgets. That's, that's correct. Steve?
We've got some of the department heads here, talking about budgets, talking about budget hearings. Can we hear from some of the department heads on where their mindset's at? And the second part of my question is, I've kinda heard through the direct line, we're having a, uh, town hall meeting? Is that my understanding? Are we fixing to have a town hall meeting?
I think, downtown, Phil. I think it's a down, uh, City of Jasper Downtown Development Town Hall Meeting, uh, what they're having, uh, at the, upstairs of the bar and bar, and I believe, I haven't heard off.
Rick Jasper's will be in Jasper at new, Lee Newton Park next Thursday, twenty-three and six p.m. Hill Gate meeting.
Okay, so Rick.
Water the freeze moon high.
In reference to what you just said about Rick Jasper, I'm surprised that he's not here. I do appreciate, I complained Tuesday about a senior's paying, uh, school taxes. You said that you had been in touch with him and was gonna try to do something. Surely, sure, if that man's got enough power to get a law page to carry a gun to church, he can help us.
If I may, if I may, Ms. Lyles, back there in the back, Chairman of the School Board, and she has already made the statement that, you know, y'all would be more than welcome to come to her and, and see if, you know, we get the school board on board. I'm sure it's a discussion that needs to be carried, carried through. Any other questions or comments?
Well, I wanna extend my end of it. Can we hear from the county officials? Can we have a town hall meeting? Can we get that gathered? We've talked about that before.
Not, we got, Steve, I don't know how we could accomplish that, trying to get these budget hearings done, and we want everybody to come to those, and we're gonna try to work something out of that in. I've got one back there in the back. Yes, ma'am?
Hey, my name's Carrie Roberts. I just moved back to Pickens County. Um, I left here six years ago and come back. I was very impressed when I lived in Cherokee County with the 9-1-1 and their new fire trucks and everything, and when I come back here, I was kinda sad to see that they hadn't increased any of that. Um, I understand their pay. I work for Cherokee County and the school board departments, so, sorry. Um, but where is this budget coming back to emergency services? Cause they're gonna need it, the elderly people are gonna need it quicker than we are. Um, I don't mean that in, I raised this way, but, um, it's, it's really sad to see that there's so much underpaid and understaffed and not getting the supplies they need when Cherokee County can get it. Understandingly, their militage rate's a lot higher, but in the budget, is that gonna get back to them, or are we gonna go back to putting it back into community?
What Cherokee County did, if I may, what Cherokee County did, they, three mills, uh, they raised their taxes, two or three mills, and that money is particularly set forth to fire protection of Cherokee County, and that's how they do it down there. So that gives them excess funds, and that's for, that's perpetuity, I'm, I'm assuming, when they set that up. Henceforth, they've got quite a bit of money, plus they've got a lot of, a lot of infrastructure, a lot of commercial growth down there. On the other hand, as most of y'all know, we're, we're wind, we're gonna have to wind up going to a, a full-time fire departments, cause our volunteers, as great as they've been, they're starting to, you know, starting to thin out, starting to get older, and then we're trying to build the fire stations as we go. Again, that's probably, you know, that budget, that'll be in the budget hearings as we bring it forward.
So part of this militage is to raise, is we'll be back to the fire services and the police and the police?
It benefits their two thousand fourteen budgets.
It, this benefits towards two thousand fourteen budget, but we're working towards that, what you're saying, yes. Back there, yes, ma'am?
Yes, my name's Michelle Polonex. I'm a new county employee, and I'm just hoping to tell you that, you know, county employees and salaries, that each department does try to balance their budget, and I wanted to make sure that the citizens of Pickens County know that we are affected by the militage rate and the tax increase, just like all the regular citizens are of Pickens County.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Jerry?
I'm Jerry Andrews, I was born and raised in Pickens County. Sure of all those county charges reported, education two and a half percent, take their local tax rate each year. This year it's going around five hundred fifty thousand dollars. It'll be around that at the end of next year, I'm sure. My question is, does that five hundred fifty thousand finance the tax commissioner's budget for fiscal year? Where does that might go? It does?
It goes to, um, it goes to support the tax assessor's budget and the tax commissioner's budget, because they do the assessing and the, um, billing and collecting.
The board gets paid that much tax.
That amount does not try and cover the entire budget, but it goes to support.
Yes, Bart?
One more quick comment from people. If you look around this room, you'll see several elected officials that are here, several department heads that are here, and they're not gonna run out of this room. If you've got questions for them individually, I'm sure they'd stop to talk to you. I mean, I know that I wanna get home, everybody wants to get home, but, but the judge is here, I gotta say something nice about her, so I have to arrest her, that's why the police must stay in charge.
May I do something for, real quick? How many, how many, other than Judge Weaver here, how many other elected officials we have, or school board included? Can y'all just raise your hands? All right, Sheriff's back there in the back, we got some board members here, we got Judge Weaver and Sheriff Troblin. Uh, please, if y'all wanna ask them questions after this meeting's over, please do so. They're not gonna, they're not, we're not gonna run out on you.
You make the necessary amendments to these budget hearings so that we can ask questions to these elected officials.
I can talk to my board.
Would that be a problem, Judge?
Only the time, the time issue.
Time, the time issue.
Would you, could you set it up for next year?
Well, it'd still be, it'd still be a time issue. Go ahead. Any further questions or comments? Ladies and gentlemen, I mean, it's been a tough three weeks for everybody sitting here. I promise you. But, we've got these budget meetings coming on, I'm losing my voice, but we've got these budget meetings coming on, and please, if y'all wanna come and sit, and we will try to arrange something where we have some time left for these hour meetings, maybe we can get up and, and have you ask a few questions. I wanna now call this meeting adjourned. Thank you for coming.